Good morning, welcome to the Budget Appropriations Meeting. I am Danielle McCray, I'm Chair of the Committee as well as the City Council member for the 2nd District. At this time, I want to ask everyone to please silence your cell phones. And joining us today, we have Committee members. We have Councilman Isaac Itzis-Slyfer, representing the 5th District, also our Vice Chair. We have Councilwoman Sharon Gray Middleton, who was our Vice President, and Councilman, representing the 6th District, and Councilman Paris Gray, representing the 8th District. In addition, we have several representatives from the Mayor's Office, the City Council President's Office, as well as the Office of Council Services. And Staffing our Committee today is going to be Paroma Nandi. Today, we are going to hear 10 bills. We are going to go through the bills. We're going to see if any Committee members have any questions after our agencies provide their reports on the bills, and then we're going to have any public testimony after we get through all of the bills. We're going to start with Bill 25-099, that is supplementary municipal telephone exchange fund operating appropriation, municipal telephone exchange service 133, for $1,400,000. And this bill was introduced on September 29th. We're going to start with our agency reports, and we'll start with our Law Department.
Thank you, Madam Chair. Michelle Toth, on behalf of the Law Department, we approve the bill for form and legal sufficiency.
Thank you, and from the Department of Finance.
Good morning, Madam Chair, members of the Committee. Laura Larson, City Budget Director. We stand by our bill response in support of the bill. This isn't supplemental that the administration worked on behalf of the Comp Triller to initiate with the Board of Estimates and to bring before you at the City Council. What we're seeking to do is appropriate a portion of the fund balance from the municipal telephone exchange in order to invest back into a series of improvements to the overall system.
Thank you. For the Comptroller's Office, do you stand by your report?
Good morning, Casey Callahan, for the Comptroller's Office. Yes, Madam Chair, we stand by your report.
And for BSIT, do you stand by your report?
Good morning, Leila Lehman, interim Director for BSIT. We do stand by our report. Do just want to provide an update. We did meet, we expressed some concerns in our bill, in our report. We met with the Comptroller's Office yesterday and feel like we have a good path forward on that. Thank you.
Thank you. And we did not receive reports from the Circuit Court or the Pratt Library on this item. Are there any questions or comments from Committee members regarding this bill?
I just want to just say that this telephone exchange, these problems have been going on forever, as long as I've been a councilperson, and I wish there was more that could be offered. We need to continue to improve on, you know, any exchange, and this is just so crucial, and it's just not telephone. As you see, it goes widespread to different pieces, so definitely have my support on this, and I just wanted to make that statement, that this is just so important.
Okay, thank you, Vice President Middleton. Are there any additional comments or concerns? So we're going to get to our next bill, that's going to be 25-0109, supplementary special grant fund operating appropriation, the Mayor's Office of Employment Development, for $300,000. So the Law Department, do you stand by your report?
Yes, Madam Chair, we approve for form and legal sufficiency.
And for the Department of Finance, do you stand by your report?
Yes, Madam Chair, we stand by our report. This is a supplemental to accept a state grant that was received by the Mayor's Office of Employment Development. The agency was notified about the acceptance of the grant following the completion of the FY '26 budget, as is our practice where we budget based off of known grant awards. That's why we are bringing this before you as a supplemental budget action.
Thank you. And the Mayor's Office of Employment Development, do you stand by your report? For Committee members, do we have any questions at this time? Okay, standing here are none. We are going to move to Bill 25-0105, that's supplementary general fund operating appropriation, Baltimore City Public Schools, $12,911,344. And this bill was introduced on October 20th, 2025, of 2025. And for the Law Department, do you approve the bill for form and legal sufficiency?
Yes, Madam Chair.
For the Department of Finance, do you stand by your report?
Yes, Madam Chair, this is the first in a package of bills that we are bringing before the Council in order to close out general fund agencies to ensure that they ended the fiscal '25 budget within budget for the overall general fund.
Thank you. And for Baltimore City Public Schools, do you stand by your report? Can you come to the podium and just state your first and last name and just say the agency you're with, please?
Maureen Gersberg, from Baltimore City Public Schools. And yes, for the amount that we have, we had $12,911,344, yes.
Okay, and you guys do stand by your report?
Yes.
Okay, thank you. Okay, and we also have a presentation that we're, a brief presentation that we're going to hear from our Finance Department at this time.
Good morning again, Madam Chair, members of the Committee. Laura Larson, City Budget Director. As I mentioned, on today's agenda, we have a series of supplemental actions that are retroactive to fiscal '25. These actions will ensure that general fund agencies that ended the year with a deficit are in balance at the close of the fiscal year, which is required under the city's charter. So I was before the Committee a couple of months ago to provide an overview of where we thought we were going to end FY '25, and just want to remind folks of those numbers. In terms of general fund revenue, we projected a, or we are anticipating a $66.6 million overall surplus. That's $29.6 million higher than what we had reported at the third quarter. That overall revenue surplus is primarily driven by stronger-than-anticipated income tax returns. If you'll remember, we had downgraded our forecast for income tax revenue at the third quarter based off of guidance and information from the state of Maryland, but what we actually saw in the fourth quarter was overall growth in income tax receipts that had exceeded previous projections, and a higher-than-an unexpected unallocated payment for prior-year uncollected taxes. We also saw growth and strength in the city's property tax. Preliminary results showed that our overall collection rate was higher than what we had projected in the budget, which was contributing to strong revenue for property tax in FY '25. On the expenditure side, we finished the year with a $53.5 million net deficit. We did see that coming out of the third quarter, expenditures slowed primarily due to the spending controls that were put in place by the administration. When we look at some of the drivers of the overages in FY '25, we can point to the cost of the police and fire contracts that were negotiated with our labor partners. The actual cost of those contracts exceeded what we had assumed in the budget. Some other items that contributed to the deficit was additional winter weather, above and beyond what we had assumed in the budget, as well as some unplanned expenditures in Wreckin' Parks that dealt with their response to the Camp Small Fire. In terms of good news, we did see that agencies are continuing to make progress in their overall vacancies. We saw that the number of general fund vacancies had declined by 16% when we look over the full fiscal year. So what that means is that these numbers work together to have a net ending position of an anticipated $13.1 million general fund surplus. I will stress and note that these are our preliminary unaudited figures. The way that the closeout process works is that my team and I work with agencies to prepare a series of entries to close out the fiscal year, and then what happens is we hand over the books to our colleagues in the Bureau of Accounting and Payroll Services, and they go through the complete closeout process and work with the city auditors. And so you may see that this number will change in the final FY '25 financial statements based off of any closeout actions that were identified after BBMR completed their work. So as I mentioned, we have a series of actions before you today that are intended to ensure that general fund agencies that exceeded their budget will be brought within budget for the close of the fiscal year. The first agency is the Fire Department that ended the year with a $38.5 million deficit. The deficit drivers there were the union contract, overtime costs, and then unbudgeted contractual EMS services. The Law Department ended the year with an $81,000 deficit that was related to contractual services that had exceeded the budgeted amount. The Liquor License Board had exceeded their budget by $454,000 due to office rental costs that exceeded the budget, the leasing of external cars, and overtime costs. City Schools, the item which we just heard, ended the year with a $12.9 million deficit, and that was related to the city's contribution for the City Springs New School, that's part of the PSO development. The Police Department ended the year with a $47.5 million deficit due to the union, the cost of the union contract plus overtime costs. The Department of Recreation and Parks ended the year with a $5.6 million deficit due to overtime, urban forestry costs, and various maintenance costs in the agency. The Sheriff's Office ended the year with a $3.4 million deficit due to fleet costs, the use of outside vehicles, and overtime. And finally, the Department of Transportation ended with a $4.5 million deficit due to snow removal costs. In terms of how we're thinking about budgetary controls and ensuring that agencies stay within budget for fiscal '26, there are a number of process changes that we put in place at the top of the fiscal year. The first relates to purchasing activities. So we decreased the overall threshold in terms of purchasing activity that requires a manual budget check coming through BBMR, to where essentially all purchasing activity comes through our shop in order to verify that there are funds to cover the action. If an agency does have an unplanned procurement or something that wasn't anticipated in the FY '26 budget, they need to provide an offset before we're able to move forward with that procurement. In terms of hiring actions, we're continuing our prior practice where agencies must provide offsets in order to cover the cost for unplanned HR actions, and position reclassifications and new position creations needed to be planned for in the FY '26 budget in order to move forward. The first quarter ended on September 30th, and my team has been working with agencies to wrap up our quarterly forecast, and we will be back before this Committee to present the results of that forecast in two weeks. So as mentioned, this package of supplemental actions that are before you will rectify all of these deficits. They are being funded through essentially the net revenue surplus and expenditure surplus from various agencies that was realized in FY '25. Happy to take any questions, sort of from a big picture, before we move into discussion on each of the bills.
Thank you, Director. We have been joined by Councilman Antonio Glover, representing the 13th District. Thank you. Committee members, do we have any questions regarding this presentation or the City Schools supplementary? We are going to move on to 25-0106, supplementary general fund operating appropriation for the Fire Department. And for our Law Department, do you approve this bill for form and legal sufficiency?
Yes, Madam Chair.
And for the Department of Finance, do you stand by your bill report?
Yes, Madam Chair.
For the Fire Department, do you stand by, do you have any comments at this time?
We stand by the report from the Finance Department.
Thank you. And do we have any questions from the Committee regarding this bill? We're going to move to supplementary, supplementary general fund operating appropriation, Department of Law, that's going to be 25-0107. For the Law Department, do you approve this bill for form and legal sufficiency?
Yes, Madam Chair.
Department of Finance, do you approve your, do you stand by your bill report?
Yes, Madam Chair, we stand by our favorable bill report.
Okay, and do we have any questions or concerns about this bill? We're going to move to 25-0108, supplementary general fund operating appropriation for the Liquor License Board. For our Law Department, do you approve this bill for form and legal sufficiency?
Yes, Madam Chair.
And for the Department of Finance, do you stand by your bill report?
Yes, Madam Chair, we stand by our favorable bill response.
And for the Liquor License Board, do you stand by your bill report?
For the record, Michelle Wertzberger, the Deputy Executive Secretary for the Baltimore City Liquor Board. As we mentioned in our bill report, we've made a number of internal changes to ensure that this never happens again, including meeting with our analysts monthly to go over anything that's pending or any other issues that we may have.
Thank you. Committee members, do we have any questions? Okay. We're going to move to 25-0110, supplementary general fund operating appropriation for our Police Department. For the Law Department, do you approve this bill for form and legal sufficiency?
Yes, Madam Chair.
Thank you. Department of Finance, do you stand by your report?
Yes, Madam Chair, we stand by our favorable response.
And for our Police Department, do you stand by your report?
Good morning, Madam Chair, yes, we do.
Thank you. And just for the record, can you just state your first and last name?
Yes, I apologize. My name is Charlotte Graham.
Thank you, and just the agency you're with?
Baltimore Police Department.
Thank you. Do we have any questions or concerns from Committee members on this item? Going to move to 25-0111, supplementary general fund operating appropriation, Department of Recreation and Parks. For the Law Department, do you approve this bill for form and legal sufficiency?
Yes, Madam Chair.
Thank you. Department of Finance?
Yes, Madam Chair, we stand behind our favorable response.
And for Wreckin' Parks, do you stand by your bill report?
Good morning, Madam Chair, Jenny Morgan from Wreckin' Parks. We do stand by our report.
Thank you. Any questions from Committee members? Okay, Councilman Paris Gray, at this time.
Thank you, Madam Chair. As I'm looking through this, I see that we're doing supplemental for forestry and park maintenance. And this is just something for the administration. Those are two issues that I know I hear a lot about in my community, and I know other council folks hear about. And so if we're coming back to do supplemental, I really think that we should probably be a little forward-thinking and make sure that both forestry and park maintenance have the ample amount of money in there, so we're just not coming back and asking for supplementals, that they just have it so we don't have to go through this process, and so we can just get a lot of the things, like cutting trees, making people feel safer, making pedestrian crossings, making, you know, a trail, and a bunch of other issues that I know I have in my district that folks are always talking about. If we just have that there, just for it to get done, I feel like, one, we could skip this, but, two, we would keep our constituents happy.
Appreciate that feedback, Councilman. I think one thing that's important to know as it pertains to FY '25 is that we did, that does encapsulate the Camp Small response, so a portion of the deficit is related to that unplanned emergency that happened in FY '25. But, you know, the Scott administration is very committed to investments in the Department of Recreation and Parks, and we're very focused on that as we work on, begin our work on the fiscal '27 budget.
Vice President Middleton?
Thank you, Madam Chair. And the Councilman from the 8th District, I think we're all on the same page. I just want to add that I'm still finding that there is a disconnect, and this is for the administration, there's a disconnect between Wreckin' Parks and forestry, in particular, with DOT and BG&E. And it's just so crucial that that communication is really important because I'm finding it's one of the reasons that projects are not completed when it comes to overgrowth around our streets, especially streets that have projects where BG&E is working on lighting, and it holds up that progress because forestry has not gotten to a certain area, and we don't know where they are on the list, and here you have streetlights that are out. It's just, I think it's one of the main issues that's causing delays, and it really needs to be looked at seriously.
Thank you for that feedback, Madam Vice President. I will take that back to the city administrator. I can share that she's been leading efforts through her team with agencies to talk about the partnership and the collaboration with BG&E for issues like this, as well as issues within the Department of Transportation. So we'll ensure that this particular topic is part of that work.
Thank you for your comments, Committee members, as well as to the Director. We're going to move to 25-0112, supplementary general fund operating appropriation, Sheriff's Office. For the Law Department, do you approve this bill for form and legal sufficiency?
Yes, Madam Chair.
Thank you. For the Department of Finance, do you stand by your bill report?
Yes, Madam Chair, we stand behind our favorable response.
And for the Sheriff's Office, is there a representative at this time? Okay. Committee members, do you have any questions, comments, or concerns about this item? Standing here are none.
Madam Chair, you said there's no representative?
There is, no, there's not a representative from the Department, excuse me, from the Sheriff's Office.
Is there a reason for that? With this much money being approved, this is over $3 million, and there's no representation here, I see there's a problem for me.
Is there a, where is our government relations representative?
I can follow up with Director Thamelis to see what coordination had happened with the Sheriff's Office regarding today's hearing, and we can follow up with the Sheriff's Office to provide any, you know, necessary, to ensure that feedback is provided back to the Committee. I will say there is some level of urgency in terms of moving these items so that we can reflect the items properly in the FY '25 financial statements and ensure that the city is able to finish their FY '25 statements within the targeted deadline by the end of December.
Thank you. I just want to make it a matter of record that it was said this is somewhat an emergency, and for a representative of the Sheriff's Department not to be here is, quite frankly, embarrassing. Thank you.
Thank you, Vice President Middleton. We're going to take a brief recess. We'll be back in about three minutes. Okay, so we're back in session on, we're back in session on this bill. We're going to move to 25-0113, supplementary general fund operating appropriation, Department of Transportation. Does the Law Department approve their bill for form and legal sufficiency?
Yes, Madam Chair.
For the Department of Finance, do you stand by your bill report?
We do, we stand by our favorable response.
And for the Department of Transportation?
Good morning, Madam Chair, Christian McNair, representing DOT. We stand by our favorable bill report.
Committee members, do you have any questions or concerns about the supplementary for the Department of Transportation? And that's going to be Councilman Slyfer.
Thank you, Madam Chair. I noticed on here, you know, looking through some of the items, I want to know if you can speak about the street lighting program. Recently, I had a walkthrough in my district with the street lighting team, and it was brought to my attention that there was zero available LED lights for streetlight upgrades. We were told for many years that every streetlight in the entire city was going to be replaced, that that never ended up coming to fruition, and now we're in a place that there is zero streetlights and have been for a very long time, and we're told that it's because of having trouble finding vendors and such. I did, I don't know, probably 10 minutes of research online and found vendors that are selling the exact lights that we need. And so can you talk a little bit about that? Because I see, you know, there's a $23 million budget for street lighting here, so where's that money going?
Thank you for your concerns, Councilman. We could follow up with you when we have more information regarding that.
Is there nobody from street lighting here?
No, not here today.
Are you aware that there's zero streetlights available and has been for over a year?
No, I was not aware of that, but again, we can follow up with that.
I'm sorry, I'm unfamiliar. What's your, what's your position?
Legislative Affairs.
Okay. I mean, this was brought to all levels of transportation, including the Director, multiple times over the past few months, so, and I've been told I was going to get answers to those. I haven't gotten it yet. So now that you guys are seeking another $4.5 million, I think it's important for, at least for me, to understand what we're getting for $23 million in street lighting if you have no streetlights.
Again, Councilman, we can follow up with you regarding that.
Councilman, would you like me to give a high-level summary of what's included in the overall budget for street lighting?
Sure, that'd be great.
So some of the major cost drivers within the Services General Fund budget would be the rental costs for the poles that we share with BG&E. We budget $6.8 million for those costs. We also budget $6.6 million for the utility costs of the lights. We also budget $6.6 million for the utility costs of the, of the lights, of the city's lights. And then we have a budget of $2.5 million for maintenance costs associated with the lights. In addition to those sort of lease payments and utility payments, we also budget $804,000 for various material and, materials and supplies to administer the program. That includes about $675,000 for general operating supplies and about $122,000 for fuel costs associated with the fleet assets that support the street lighting fleet. And then the remaining portion of the budget would be dedicated to the personnel costs associated with administering the service.
And how much does the personnel cost?
So between...
Like six million?
Yeah, between salaries and OPCs, the FY, or I'm sorry, between salaries and other personnel costs, the FY25 budget was $2.9 million.
So where's, okay, so where's the rest of the money?
Then the, the remainder of the money would fall into other smaller spend categories that I, I didn't...
So, so how much is budgeted for new lights?
So in terms of, that is where I would need DOT to walk you through in a little bit more specifics in terms of how they budget that, the cost for new lights. Because like I said, what I'm seeing here in the operating budget are the cost to maintain the existing assets. I know what DOT will do is they will purchase lights as an inventory, like as a stockpile inventory that can then get deployed out to different locations to either, you know, for either proactive maintenance and repair or to, for, you know, knockdown replacement or whatever the case may be. Those inventory charges would end up sort of falling in line with these amounts that are, are budgeted that I was discussing.
So, I mean, they're asking for, was it four and a half million dollars supplemental? I assume there is a budget line item. I mean, based on the calculations you gave just back at Napkin, I wasn't calculating exact, but there's still, there's still like $4 million that's unaccounted for, you know, to the smaller things that you're talking about. I assume a portion of that is for these new inventory items. Being that they have not purchased those items, which is, I would assume their largest inventory item expense in street lighting would be streetlights. That shouldn't, that, those millions of dollars that are not going towards it because they haven't been able to do a Google search and find the vendors that have these in stock, shouldn't that go towards the supplemental?
So again, I, I'm not as connected to the procurement issues associated with the program. I would defer that to my colleagues in DOT. What I could offer to provide as a follow-up to the committee is I could give you the full streetlight budget that would, that would break out the full $21.9 million general fund appropriation that was included in FY26. Some of the other items that I didn't identify when I was going through that quick level summary were their fleet costs, you know, fleet cost is another $1 million. I didn't talk about the principal and interest costs associated with some of the outstanding conditional purchase agreements. That's another $1.2 million. So I would be happy to provide that detail as a follow-up.
So can we get a little just clarity, logistical clarity on the staffing, this $3 million in staffing in street lighting category? What repairs are they making that BGE is not responsible for?
I would like to defer to our fiscal.
Can, can any, can all of DOT representatives go to one of those mics who are present and can answer these questions? Thank you.
Can you hear me? Oh.
Yes, can we get to your first and last name and just the agency you're representing for the record?
Thank you. My name is Brandon Buckner. I'm the Deputy Director at Baltimore City DOT. Just started, good morning, everyone. All of your questions this morning are very valid. What I can do is just speak on, you know, systematically how traffic lights are typically updated, you know, in cities. Typically, it is, is a system-wide effort. It's not just finding a vendor to purchase the LED lights, but it's finding a vendor to install and maintain these lights over the life of the system. I do know that the, the department has a plan to update streetlights citywide. So I do want to start there. We do have a plan to update streetlights citywide. But my question to you is, do you have any priority locations? Do I kind of follow up with staff to kind of, as an interim approach?
Oh, I mean, so welcome, first off.
Thank you, thank you.
Nice to meet you. The, the Director is, is fully aware of that, but obviously my priority is citywide on the, the lights that were left behind and not upgraded, that they said would have been upgraded about like six or seven years ago. And they're aware of those locations, but, but I'm, I'm talking about more, and I'm, I'm very familiar with the system because I've been, I've been on this for, for a minute. But what I'm specifically looking for is in this, you know, $23 million budget, $22 million budget just for street lighting, you have, you know, 15% going to staffing, which is fine, but I'm just curious, what are they physically doing if BGE, when there's, when a light is broken in the city, BGE goes out and replaces it? And so right now, the only way to get an LED light in Baltimore City is to break every single non-LED light in the city. Because then BGE, which has closets full of these lights, would just come around and replace the lights. That's how it works. Unless those lights get broken, BGE is not contractually obligated to go ahead and replace those. And so what physical things, and when there's cabling issues, BGE also goes out and fixes that. So what I'm trying to understand is what items are covered? What, what is the, what items is the staff, what repairs are they making?
Yeah. No, I think that's a great question. I do provide an...
I think we got somebody who can answer that question.
Good morning, Director.
Hi.
How you doing?
We're talking about street lighting.
Yes.
And so the first question I had asked, the team wasn't familiar with, was how much money is budgeted as part of this $22 million in street lighting? How much of that is towards purchasing new streetlights?
The, again, the overall budget for the service is $21.9 million. Like I said, there's that, those, those, the rental payments to BG&E, the, the $6.6 million for the utility costs and the $2.5 million for the maintenance costs associated...
I'm just looking for how much is, but there's about $4 million still floating as part of this $21 million. How much of that $4 million is allocated towards new streetlights?
All right, but I need, for the record, I just need you to state your first and last name and just, just your agency, please, before you respond.
Sorry, Veronica McBad, Director of DOT. I don't know that number right offhand. I can get it back to you.
Yeah, so I appreciate that. So then the other question I had, we, we identified that about $3 million of it was going towards the staff of street lighting. So the question I had on that was if you can just tell us the types of repairs that that staff makes that's not part of the, because we know like when a light breaks or there's a cabling issue, that's part of our contractual agreement with BGE. They, they do those replacements and repairs. So what repairs do, does the in-house staff handle? What kind of stuff?
Our in-house staff, they go out and they are changing the LEDs. They are actually collecting the poles. So we have collected, we've established an agreement now with BG&E that we collect all the poles if they are knocked down. So we're collecting poles for both city poles and BG&E poles. And so we are cataloging for both BG&E and city. And then the BG&E poles, they will come and collect and reinstall. As far as city poles, if something comes down for a city pole, we repair and replace and reinstall.
So, thank you. So you said they change LEDs and if a city pole comes down, they replace it. So where are they getting these LEDs that they're replacing them with?
If it is an LED, they are replacing them from an inventory that we have, if we have inventory, or they are ordering them.
So that, that's the, that was the whole summary of the questions was the fact that I've been told that there is zero LEDs in inventory in the Department of Transportation. And there hasn't been inventory for quite some time, over a year. So, it, well, first, is that accurate? Is there zero LEDs in the city, in DOT's inventory?
After my last conversation with Damian, my understanding is, is that they're in the process and have been ordering LEDs. There's a backlog, as you know, citywide as far as materials, lots to do with the fact that tariffs, all sorts of other things. So as far as I know, that we have been stalled out, but I gave you an example of, you asked me, what do they do as far as changing out the lights? I provided an example, so.
Yeah. Well, the example you gave, the first thing you said was that they change LEDs. But the question here is, have we had any, any LEDs? Because I've been told, and I have this in writing also from DOT, that there hasn't been any LEDs in stock in a very long time. And they still have zero LEDs in stock. So if the example you gave is that this $3 million of staff, the, the first thing they do is change LEDs, where are they, where are they getting them from?
I'm, that wasn't an example provided. I'm not saying specifically that's what they're changing right now. That was an example of LEDs. When they're in stock, they're changing LEDs. We have a number of different type of light fixtures that we utilize throughout the city. So there aren't exclusively LEDs throughout the city, but we are changing lights, we're changing fixtures, et cetera.
So...
We are waiting for more LEDs to come into stock.
Got you. So, and the other thing was about replacing poles. So when they replace a pole, like if they go out there and replace a pole from a car accident that fell down and they replace it today, are you saying that they're putting up a non-LED light on top of that pole?
I'm saying that if it was an LED pole up, it may not have, the, the light fixture itself could maybe not have been damaged, or the pole may not go directly back up until the LED fixture is available to replace. Do you understand what I mean when I'm explaining that component?
Yeah, I just, I, I, I'm envisioning this, and what I'm envisioning is that for $3 million, we're collecting poles because we're not changing LEDs because we have none and haven't had some in quite some time. And we're not replacing them because we don't have the lights to replace them with. And so I guess that's kind of where like I'm, I'm confused is, you know, how are they doing any of this work if they don't have the lights?
Every, I would say the volume of LEDs, and I don't have the percentage unfortunately with me, I can provide that to you at a later date, but there is a likely a very, a lot higher volume of other light fixtures throughout the city than LEDs. So we have the capacity to change other lights within the city. So the percentage of LEDs versus other light fixtures is a lot higher.
Right, so my, so that was my last question, and I'll end on that, is are they changing, when a light pole falls, are they putting old light fixtures that are non-LEDs up? Because we've been told everything's going to LED, any replacement, everything's LED. So are you saying that, are they replacing today light poles with old lighting fixtures that are non-LEDs?
If there are some areas that are not, that are not scheduled to be changed to LEDs or they're not programmed to be changed, it is being changed out to what it is and the pattern that if it's not programmed to do so just yet, they're being held into the patterns that are existing. So if it's not a programmed area to be changed out to LEDs, then it's not going to be changed out to LEDs yet. So say you have a community that has on a block, for example, you have 10 light poles, one gets knocked down on that block, that one light is not going to be changed to an LED if that area hasn't been programmed yet to be changed to LEDs.
Got you. So DOT is keeping, is still purchasing old lighting fixtures?
It doesn't mean they're purchasing old lighting fixtures. It means that we could still have in-stock lighting fixtures.
Got you. So when can we expect the new LEDs to arrive?
I can check with my lighting division to see what the time is.
Okay. If we can make all that committee request to get those questions answered.
Absolutely.
And since MoGR is not here, hopefully somebody's documenting that.
Vice Chair Cypher, we are going to make sure that you get all of your committee requests answered. We'll make sure we take care of that on our end, since MoGR is not present.
Thank you, Madam Chair.
At this time. We also have a question from Councilman Gray.
Thank you, Madam Chair. I, I guess my question is going to be centered around, or just a request. Do you think it would probably be in the interest of the city if the residential poles, not the ones near, in Harbor, but the residential poles, if there was some type of MOU where BG&E just takes over the few that are remaining? I just know personally in my district, whenever there's an issue, it usually is easier and a lot faster for BG&E to come and fix whatever lights are down. And they do it in a considerable less time than what DOT is able to do. And it could be because of these issues, but I also see that there may be a potential solution if they are just to be able to take over the, the few poles that are left in the city that are still DOT maintained. I just wanted to know what your, if you give me insight on why that isn't and, or is, if that's something that you guys are thinking about?
So the way the process goes is that when, if, for example, you're putting something into 311, I'm assuming so if a pole is knocked down, damaged, or a light is out. If you're putting in the location, it'll then go into the 311 system and then it's sent to the lighting division. And essentially, it'll show that whether or not the pole is a city pole or BG&E pole, then that pole is sent to either BG&E for the repair. If it's just knocked down, again, we have this new MOU with BG&E, they will still pick up the pole, but then they will come out and replace and fix the pole. If it's a city pole, we'll come out, replace and fix the pole. So I will say with the new system, as far as us coming out and picking up the poles, the system has actually happened a lot faster in this capacity. BG&E, I would say, would agree with the fact that they've, it's been a lot of faster process with us coming fixing or picking up the poles. As far as residential poles versus BG&E poles, we own the asset, so they cannot fix city-owned assets. We are required to fix the city-owned assets, and at this time, there's no plan for us to do a trade-off, if you will, or have BG&E fix city-owned assets.
It just, it seems to me that like either the process has to improve. Because I know just in my district, there's one area where there were a few lights out in a certain, a particular alley, and all of the BG&E ones were fixed and the DOT one just still continues to sit there unfixed. And we can send it back in, we can send something. And maybe it's because the LEDs or whatever, the, the lights aren't in place, but it just seems, for those types of issues, it would just seem a little easier for BG&E just to go ahead and just fix it than what DOT may be able to do currently at the moment with its capacity. So, but thank you.
Absolutely. And I did think I just want to kind of delve a little deeper into that. Absolutely. And I did think, I just want to kind of delve a little deeper into that. It could also be a process issue, the way something is entered into 311. Not specifically entered into 311, but once it goes through the system, it's something that we're digging into with the IT Division as far as, and also 311, the way things start filtering through 311. Once the light requests go into 311, it breaks it out into BG&E and also the city requests, whomever gets it first and does repair. Sometimes the repair is ultimately closed out. And it doesn't mean that it's closed out in its entire, in its entirety, as in both assets are repaired. It could just be BG&E might be repaired, or the city light might be repaired as opposed to one being repaired and then it trickling over to the other one. Not ideal, so that's something we're addressing right now as well. But it's noted, and I will make sure that we talk to our counterparts both at 311 and in our lighting division to see if that's some of the problems that they're still seeing.
Do we have any additional questions from committee members for the Director? Okay, thank you. We're going to check to see if we have any public testimony, if anyone has signed up at this time. Great. We are going to go back to 25-0112, Supplementary General Fund Operating Appropriation Sheriff's Office. We do have a representative from the Sheriff's Office at this time. If you could state your name for the record and also your agency, thank you.
Hi, good morning, Madam Chair, members of the committee. For the record, my name is Nicholas Blendi, and I'm Assistant Sheriff at the Baltimore City Sheriff's Office. And I want to open by saying, I am very embarrassed that I misunderstood. It's nobody's fault but mine that we were late. And so, I beg the Council's forgiveness for that. But with that said, I'm happy to hear-
We do not accept your apology.
Oh, okay. Well, 30 lashes then, perhaps, from the chair, we'll settle. Thank you, Madam Chair, I apologize. I'm happy to answer questions, I'm happy to present briefly. Largely, we defer to how finance has outlined the three things that, I guess, were misaligned in the budget. I do note that we did not spend all of our other budget. There are other areas of the budget that we did not reach the amount we were budgeted for. And I think fundamentally, nothing has changed since our ordinance of estimates hearing, where we went through some of the fleet issues. Happy to go into the detail of the confusion between our understanding that the upfitting cost was not in the vehicle purchase cost, which we now have a clear understanding with DGS. But, you know, one would have thought that if one was ordering police, you know, Sheriff's Office vehicles that have to be law enforcement, upfitted with cages and lights, that that would be in the purchase amount. Because what good is a regular car to a law enforcement office? But we misunderstood that it was a separate line item, you know, growing pains. So, that won't happen again. Now, we have a good relationship with Nick Hirsch and with BBMR. Over time, costs are similar to, I assume, what you've heard from many of the other agencies. And I do note that we've been very proactive in the interim about trying to make sure that, for fiscal '26, we don't run into that again. We've actually been, we received $600,000 in asset forfeiture money earlier this, early last week. That was, I guess, in the queue for a while. We've also been awarded two grants from the State of Maryland that we competitively applied for through GoCap. So that's, they're both over $200,000. So we anticipate that those costs will help. One of them is directly related to the new Neighborhood Services Unit. So we anticipate that that will help offset any additional costs in our budget. And we are currently in the middle of negotiations with our union and with BBMR. And we're hopefully working out a structure that will not lead to any of the misalignments and misunderstandings. But fundamentally, we still believe that we're about $7 million underfunded for court security. And that's just an issue that we're going to have to keep coming back and having conversations with every partner at the state, at the local level, this council, the mayor, budget. But such is life, it is a tough budget time. But we continue to work in collaboration with the administration. And again, we work in collaboration with the council. And I truly apologize, I'm deeply embarrassed that I was late. And you were absolutely right to lay into us, Madam Councilwoman.
Thank you, Madam Chair. I just want to thank you for showing up. Not to single you out, I just want to make sure that there is representation from every agency that is asking for millions of dollars for approval from the council. And if representation has to come from every other agency, it would only make sense that everyone has representation. And I just wanted to make sure that that happened, because everything that we do here in this committee is a matter of record. Thank you.
Thank you, Madam, Councilwoman.
Thank you, Vice President, and thank you, Deputy Blendi. Do we have any additional questions for the Sheriff's Office? Okay. We are going to check to see if we have any public testimony, if anyone has signed up at this time. And at this time, we do not have any members of the public who have signed up for testimony. We are going to now move into voting. Is there a motion to move Council Bill 25-0099, Supplementary Municipal Telephone Exchange Fund Operating Appropriation? Okay, we have that moved by Vice President Middleton. The motion has been moved favorably. We're going to do a roll call vote at this time. McCray?
Yes.
Schleifer? Middleton? Gray? Glover? It's five yays. It's five yeses, in favor. Okay, so we have five yayses. This motion passes. This bill is going to move to second reader at the next council meeting on November the 10th. Is there a motion to move the amendment? We have an amendment on Council Bill 25-0109, Supplementary Special Grant Fund Operating Appropriation for the Mayor's Office of Employment Development for $300,000. It's favorable. Moved by Vice President Middleton. The motion has been moved favorably. All in favor of the amendment, say yea, or aye. Is there a motion, is there a motion to move the Council Bill 25-0109 as amended, favorable? The motion has been moved by Councilmember Gray. The motion has been moved favorably. We are now going to do a roll call vote. McCray?
Yes.
Schleifer? Middleton? Gray? Glover? Five in the yays.
This motion passes. This bill will move to second reader at the next council meeting on November the 10th. Is there a motion to move Council Bill 25-0105, Supplementary General Fund Operating Appropriation Baltimore City Public Schools, favorable? Move by Vice President Middleton. The motion has been moved favorably. We're going to do a roll call vote.
McCray?
Yes.
Schleifer? Middleton? Gray? Glover? Five in the yays.
This motion passes. This bill will move to second reader at our next council meeting on November the 10th. Is there a motion to move Council Bill 25-0106, Supplementary General Fund Operating Appropriation, Department of Law? Moved by Councilmember Glover. The motion has been moved favorably. Now we're going to have a roll call vote.
McCray?
Yes.
Schleifer? Middleton? Gray? Glover? Five yays.
This motion passes. This bill will move to second reader at the next city council meeting on November the 10th. Is there a motion to move Council Bill 25-0107, Supplementary General Fund Operating Appropriation, Department of Law? It's favorable. This motion, excuse me, this bill has been moved by Councilmember Glover. The motion has been moved favorably, and now we're going to have a roll call vote.
McCray?
Yes.
Schleifer? Middleton? Gray? Glover? Five in the yays.
This motion passes. This bill will move to second reader at the next council meeting on November the 10th. Is there a motion to move Council Bill 25-0108, Supplementary General Fund Operating Appropriation, Liquor License Board? Moved by Councilmember Glover. The motion has been moved favorably. We're going to have a roll call vote.
McCray?
Yes.
Schleifer? Middleton? Gray? Glover? Five in the yays.
This motion passes. This bill will move to second reader at our next council meeting. Is there a motion to move Council Bill 25-0110, Supplementary General Fund Operating Appropriation, Police Department, is favorable? Moved by Councilmember Glover. The motion has been moved favorably, and now for a roll call vote.
McCray? Schleifer? Middleton? Gray? Glover? Five in the yays.
This motion passes. This bill will move to second reader at the next council meeting on November the 10th. Is there a motion to move Council Bill 25-0111, Supplementary General Fund Operating Appropriation, Department of Recreation and Parks? The motion has been moved favorably by Vice President Middleton, and now we'll move for a roll call vote.
McCray?
Yes.
Schleifer? Middleton? Gray? Glover? Five in the yays.
The motion passes. This bill will move to the second reader at our next city council meeting. Is there a motion to move Council Bill 25-0112, Supplementary General Fund Operating Appropriation, Sheriff's Office? It's favorable. I'm going to go with the definitive one. We're going to, this has been moved by Councilmember Glover. And the motion has been moved favorably, and now we're going to move for a roll call vote.
McCray?
Yes.
Schleifer? Middleton? Gray? Glover? Five in the yays.
This motion passes. This bill will move to second reader at our next council meeting on November the 10th. Last, we have Council Bill 25-0113, Supplementary General Fund Operating Appropriation. Is there a motion to move this bill to Department for the Department of Transportation?
Can I ask a quick question?
Council, Vice Chair, Schleifer?
Thank you, Madam Chair. I just want to check, since MoGR is not here, can I expect to get the answers to my questions by the end of the week from DOT?
Yes.
Thank you.
Are they coming in like a formal email, or?
Yeah, we're going to, since we don't have a member of MoGR who's physically present at the hearing, we're going to take on that task or something that we work with them on, but we're going to take on a task of doing it and making sure that MoGR is actually present to do this in the future. But thank you, we'll get an official email to answer your question.
Okay, thanks.
I could take on the task if you want, Madam Chair. I can send the email if you'd like.
No, we'll take care of it.
You'll do it?
Yeah, we got it.
Thank you so much.
No problem. Is there a motion to move Council Bill 25-0113, Supplementary General Fund Operating Appropriation, Department of Transportation? Thank you. Vice Chair Middleton has moved the bill. Since it has been moved favorably, we are going to go to a roll call vote.
McCray?
Yes.
Schleifer?
Yes.
Middleton? Gray? Glover? Five in the yays.
This motion has passed. This bill will move to second reader at our next council meeting on November the 10th. I want to thank everyone for joining us today. This hearing is now adjourned.